Hafade, Buenos, good morning, everyone. The Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture is now called to order. Today's Tuesday, October 4th, 2022, and the time is about 8:40 AM. In compliance with the open government law, public notices and the agenda for this confirmation hearing were published in the Guam Daily Post and the Government of Guam Public Notice Portal on Tuesday, September 7, and again on Friday, September 30, 2022. And this hearing is being streamed online on the Guam Legislature's YouTube channel. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking and begin by stating their name for record-keeping purposes. We have one agenda item this morning, and that is the appointment of Dr. Teresa Damian Borja to serve as a member of the Allied Health Professional Representative on the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority Board of Trustees for a term length of six years, from May 2, 2017 to May 1, 2023, to fill the unexpired term of Sarah M. Thomas Nedidug. Dr. Borja was appointed by Imaga Hagan Guahan on August 10, 2022. The appointment packet was forwarded to the legislature on August 18, and the appointment packet was then forwarded to this committee on August 19, 2022. The current Guam Memorial Hospital Authority Board of Trustees members are Teresa Obispo, Chairperson, Melissa Waybill, Vice Chairperson, Sonia Silian, Secretary, Sharon Davis, Trustee, Dr. Michael Um, Trustee. Recently resigned are Glynnis Almonte, Evangeline Allen, and Sarah Thomas Nedidug. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues who are here with us today, beginning with the minority leader, Senator Chris Duennias. Morning. And Senator Joanne Brown. Thank you, senators, for being here with us. Some of the duties of the Board of Trustees include: The board shall be liable for the negligent act of any hospital employee or officer if the board knew or had noticed that said employee or officer was inefficient and incompetent to perform the services for which he was hired, or said board retained such inefficient or incompetent person after knowledge or notice of such inefficiency or incompetency. No trustee shall be liable for any decision made in the good faith, nonmalicious fulfillment of his duties. Board shall be liable as fiduciaries in the execution of their duties. No trustee shall be actively engaged in the selling of services or goods to the hospital without the express approval of the Board of Trustees. This restriction shall not apply to healthcare professionals who provide direct patient care services to the hospital. No trustee shall act when a conflict of interest occurs. Trustee shall disclose the nature of the conflict of interest to the members present and abstain from any discussion or voting on the issue until it has been disposed of by action of the remaining members present. Any trustee who knowingly fails to disclose a conflict of interest in the manner listed herein shall be subject to removal from the board. So we have now here testimony from those who've signed up to testify on behalf of Dr. Teresa Damian Borja, and then we will hear from the nominee herself. So we're here, beginning with the representative from Guam Memorial Hospital. If you could please state your name and position for the record.
Thank you, Speaker Terlahi. Can you hear me? Good morning. Thank you, Speaker Terlahi. My name is William Kando. I'm the Acting Hospital Administrator, CEO, for the authority during the leave of absence of Lillian Posades. Buenos, Speaker Terlahi and Senators of the 36th Guam Legislature. On behalf of the executive leadership team and staff of the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority, it is with humility and joy that GMHA offers this written testimony in support of this legislative body, confirming the nomination of Dr. Teresa Borja Damian, DPM, to the GMHA Board of Trustees. Dr. Damian Borja graduated from the Dr. William M. Scholes College of Podiatric Medicine, Doctor of Podiatric Medicine, on May 18, 1998. She completed her residency in 1998 at Mount Sinai Hospital Medical Center on July 30, 2001, and she received Diplomat of the American Board of Podiatric Surgery on September 1, 2006. Dr. Teresa Damian Borja joined GMHA's medical staff in September 2001. She is currently an active member of the GMHA Surgery Department and is a member in good standing. Dr. Damian Borja is an excellent physician, who is highly skilled at her craft of podiatric medicine, as well, she has been a very proactive leader within the Guam community for quite some time. For example, she previously served on the GMHA Board of Trustees from 2006 to 2011. She was very instrumental relative to GMHA previously achieving hospital accreditation. chaired the BOT Quality and Safety Subcommittee during that timeframe, and has also served on GMHA's Professional Library CME Committee of the medical staff. Dr. Damian Borja continues to be a successful business owner of the Marianas Foot Care Clinic, as well as a well-respected citizen of the Guam community. It is absolutely without reservation that we, GMHA's executive leadership team, offer our strongest support towards the confirmation of Dr. Teresa Damian Borja's nomination to the GMHA Board of Trustees. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that's from Lillian Posades?
That was with support from basically the executive team. We all drafted this together.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, Mr. Kando. All right, now we will hear from Dr. Borja.
Hafade, Speaker Terlahi, senators and members of the Committee on Health, colleagues, family and friends. It is my privilege to be here again before the legislature to ask for your confirmation to serve as a member of the Board of Trustees for Guam Memorial Hospital. I was in this very spot in 2006 and was confirmed as a board member for the hospital. I became the Chair of Performance Improvement Committee, which is now called the Quality Assurance Performance Improvement Committee. It was a tremendous experience as each board learned the inner workings of the hospital and embarked on many missions, including joint commission accreditation. We were driven by great leaders, including the late Board Chair, Mr. Daniel Webb, and Dr. Michael Cruz. Mr. Webb inspired us to govern, but more importantly, to motivate and empower our team leaders and each member of the hospital staff to achieve accreditation and achieve their best work. I was very proud of management, middle management and staff. Dan said he had no doubt we could accomplish this. The problem would be in the future to maintain accreditation. My tenure at the hospital as a medical staff member is 21 years. It is a unique experience to work there as a physician, but also as a past board member. To get my steps in every day, I take the stairs as much as possible. So I get to roam the hallways as I round on my patients. As part of my work, I also spend a lot of time in the operating room and see the workings of the operating room and seeing that we're maintaining the performance improvement items that they are monitored for. I get to take in what's going on with maintenance, housekeeping, nursing, medical staff, support staff, and also some occasional CMS Medicare onsite inspections. The past few months, we saw the demolition of our Z-Wing, small areas of roof repairs containing leaks, still caring for an old electrical panel, trying to transition to a new electronic health record program, cleaning and water blasting and painting the exterior, and repairing and painting the stairway. I won't even mention the incredible work the facilities maintenance people do to keep this hospital standing. GMH management, medical and nursing staff, the comm center operators, and the whole team took us through a pandemic. None of us had the option to stay home. I am only touching on the surface of what comes to my mind at this hour. There is so much more. This will be a new role, if confirmed, to go from performance improvement to governance. If confirmed, I will be serving the remainder of the term for former BOT and senatorial candidate Sarah Nedidug. These will be big shoes to fill, and I would just have to work on what has already been started. I would take advantage of a short orientation and then be the best servant leader I can be for GMH and for our people. Taken from the hospital, the American Hospital Association, the board is responsible for overseeing matters including mission and vision development and strategic planning, quality and patient safety, financial and management performance, risk assessment and management, stakeholder input and feedback, and board development. Governance incorporates these policies and procedures used by the board to govern the organization. With your faith in me, I'm up for the challenge, and I promise to continue to put my best work forward for GMH and the people of Guam. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Borja. I just wanted to recognize that here with us today, we have members of your family.
Yes.
If you'd like to introduce them, that would be great. I know.
Sure. This is my mom, Rosa Damian, my husband, Tom, and my goddaughter, Teresa, Sister Grace, Brother John, Sister Rose, and Sister Maria.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for being here in support of this nomination. All right, so, Dr. Borja, I'm going to ask you some questions. I'd like to get some of these on the record, and then I will open it up for my colleague. Do you have any continuing business or potential interests that may affect your ability to perform your duties as a board member?
I do not. However, I did disclose that I am owner of a clinic, as well as a part-owner of self-insuring captive insurance, and also an independent contractor for GMH. But if any of those items come up where the Board of Trustees needs to vote, I will recuse myself if it involves any of those items.
As a previous member to the board from 2006 to 2011, you've testified as to some of the improvements you've seen, or the work that you've seen, because you are currently on contract and attending patients at the hospital. What are the areas that you would like to work to address if you return to the board?
I have to say that sometimes, when it rains and it leaks, and we have some structural problems at GMH, or if we had a very bad earthquake, these are my own fears, so I would always hope I could leave the hospital and not be injured. But I think, based on the Army of Engineers assessment of the hospital, it is time to move forward. I'm not saying that as a political appointee, because I'm not, but I'm saying that as a community member, that I would like to see GMH move forward with more up-to-date and current equipment and electronic health records. It just kind of pushes us a little bit forward, because we're stuck on old systems, especially our information systems, just the building structure itself, and several others. But I would love to see a new hospital built before I retire. Based on the assessment by the Army of Engineers, it probably would take more money to renovate our current structure. I hate to see that go to waste, and I wish, you know, we would do a better job of maintaining what we have, but the age of the facility kind of makes us decide on trying to build a new facility, and that's based on engineers, and I definitely don't have that expertise.
Thank you. I don't think there's any dispute that, yeah, we would all agree that we want to see a new hospital. So, thank you. And however, so the Army Corps also did recommend that we are going to need to use the current hospital for at least five years, at least. And in order to do that, and to make it safer for patients, we had to update our, I mean, we had to make some facility repairs. And so they gave us a list of those, including the roofs, of course, that are leaking, and the HVAC system, and other things. And the hospital also has announced, it's already procured a new EHR system, Electronic Health Record System, and supposed to be implementing that. I think it's October now. I'm looking forward to that. I hope it's going to be this month. But that was a little bit put on hold because of COVID, but it's supposed to be implemented, and that was a CMS requirement or recommendation also, I think, just for patient records, but also the hospital's hoping it's going to help them with billing, right? And make it more cost-efficient. So, in the budget for FY23, we just finished that in September, or August, and it kicks in October 1, so right now, right? We're under FY23. GMHA did not request, but was appropriated, an additional $15 million for priority capital improvement projects authorized in public law 3573, and that's last term, for the purposes of the renovations of the GMH Labor and Delivery Ward, in addition to to remove and replace the main electrical distribution panel and subpanels, and the EHR, I'm pretty sure. Those are all authorized expenditures from that, and the roof.
Yes.
And this is in addition to the $22,203,000 budget for GMH operations. Do you believe that the boards should have a role in determining the priority capital improvement projects at the hospital?
I think what we've learned as a Board of Trustees is that, on our last group of board members, we were divvied up a bunch of responsibilities, and, for example, Dr. Gatewood was in charge of facilities. So what we did was, over a weekend, we took each specialist from the different departments and the managers. We spent a whole weekend with them. So what that means is that we heard from the experts in each category themselves, because, of course, I'm a foot doctor, I don't know about facilities, but we were able to put together a list of priorities with each manager. And what they did was, they said, okay, these are all the things that need to be repaired. And then we took money out of the equation and said, if we had a limited amount of money, give me your top three. So each manager was able to give us their top three priorities, and as a board, of course, we took that on advisement and then figured out how those could be funded, at least, you know, trying to tackle one thing at a time for each section of the hospital. So I think the board's role is trying to put this into reality with the help of funding from whatever source we can for each fiscal year.
All right. And I appreciate the system that the trustees have, where they have assigned themselves to a certain portion of the hospital. For example, you were on the Quality Assurance or Performance Assurance Committee last time. I know Mr. Kando leads the Facilities Committee, and that there are others, but, yeah, I just want to express that, yeah, for me, I want every single board member to be responsible for every single thing. So while you may have not, you know, been on that Subcommittee, I'm hoping that the board is just not kind of rubber-stamping Subcommittee work, but flushing it out as well in board meetings, because that's why all of you have gone through this confirmation process. It's for all of you to kind of become many experts in everything at that hospital. And I just think that that extra scrutiny by that additional level, you know, from Subcommittee level and then to the trustees level, it's, you know, it's the trustees who have the fiduciary duty, and so I really want them to take that seriously in every capacity, not just in their subcommittees. So the GMH, during the 2023 budget hearings, stated that their goals for 2023 are to continue to pursue accreditation with the Center for Improvement in Healthcare Quality Organization, and that entity was chosen over the Joint Commission Accreditation because it is CMS-affiliated. To maintain CMS participation and certification, to launch the new EHR system, which should have gone live in August, I think, that's what they told us at the time, to reduce off-island staffing resources and invest in affiliation relationship via MOA, or Memorandum of Agreement, with an accredited medical school program. As to patient care, and is there anything else that you think that GMH trustee should focus on?
I do agree. We are paying so much for the traveling nurses, and it's a shame, because we could be funneling a little bit more money to our local nurses who have been working there for so long. Not only that, looking at, it's not just about paying more money to these people. These people are part of our community. For example, the operators, who have been there for, one's been there for 13 years. He's still making about $13 an hour, and he's struggling, and I know that because I take care of him. But I would like to see focus on our own staffing and definitely reduce the amount of off-island hires. I think that's, I don't even know, I think that's almost triple what our nurses make. So I think what we're doing, and part of this problem was because of that pandemic, people were getting sick, so we had to bring in outside help. But as we recover from the pandemic, I would like to see more focus on our people. I think back in 2006, between that and 2010, we were able to take excessive employees and redirect them to other departments. Under Craig Kavara, he was able to train some transport staff and take them under apprenticeship and train them in refrigeration, or train them in whatever we needed to fill in some vacant areas that we needed a lot of help with repairs and stuff with the hospital. So being creative in our hiring, or just taking our existing staff and making better use of any areas that we have excess staff, which is hardly ever the case, but anyways, stuff like that. I think I would focus on looking at our people and looking at their performance, since it's kind of what I was used to, and seeing where we're losing funds, and of course, billing is number one. Billing and collections, we did hire an outside team. It helped for a while, but as we are, you know, as they leave us, then we tend to fall into our old habits, but I think constant focus on billing and collections is definitely one of our, should be one of our priorities. I'm not there currently, so I do have a lot to catch up on, seeing what's going on with the hospital.
Okay. The hospital also hired an in-house counsel, that's new, because for several years now, they've been using the Attorney General's office, and they told me that was successful before, but all of a sudden, they hired an in-house counsel. They also hired a above-step PIO, I want to say, or, I can't remember the name of the position, but like a PIO. But the hospital, to me, has a very special ability to hire specialists, right? So on Guam, some of the legislation that we've proffered, we've heard a clamor from the community, but, you know, we will lose our specialists, and we need specialists. And I absolutely agree that we need specialists, but I believe the hospital has a very special ability to hire specialists. They've been authorized in law, first of all, a different liability than all the other doctors on Guam, that if you're practicing at GMH, you're covered in the Government of Guam Claims Act versus, you know, and those caps versus, you know, what private doctors face. They also, the Board of Trustees has given the authority to pretty much contract with specialists at the rate that they think is necessary. And so I think even with those tools, it's still been very difficult for GMH to hire specialists, but I'm hoping that, you know, you are a specialist and that you will also, you know, concentrate on that, on this ability of theirs, and not allow any no's in that regard, right? If we need a specialist on Guam, and GMH can gain that for us, I'd like to see that. I think I've talked to them once before about, you know, this PET scan ability. All of our cancer patients go back and forth to the States, because these facilities, they need PET scans, right? And they need them regularly. And I'm trying to remember, of course, my memory's not that good, but I know that when I brought this up before, it was pretty much described as, we just can't do that. But I'm going to ask you, as a new member of the board, if you could pursue that once more for the hospital. I understand the hospital doesn't have an MRI machine in-house, and I would like to see it, you know, if it could obtain for Guam, a PET scan machine that, you know, all of Guam, it would be available. I think that would be great. And just to reexamine the need for an MRI in-house at the hospital, right? There's been a controversy lately also about open government, right, at the hospital, and that, I don't know if you read the papers, but the papers talk about Mr. Ken Leon Guerrero attempted to attend, after being tipped off that the meeting was to be a discussion on plans for the construction of a new hospital. He was prevented from doing so and told that it was a private meeting and was subsequently arrested for trespassing for refusing to leave. According to Mr. Guerrero, in a statement to the media, quote, "The meeting was full of government officials talking about public policy, public healthcare policy, public lands, the public hospital, and public financing," unquote. According to GMH, the event was a training workshop with a firm called HDR Inc. for assistance in creating a strategic plan for GMH on how to improve day-to-day operations, and was about the island's hospital, not specifically a new hospital. So we have an oversight hearing coming up, if you are confirmed before then, no, just kidding. But we will be discussing that and other matters, but are you aware of this issue about public access to information and transparency regarding the public hospital and the board's role in facilitating transparency?
I am aware of that. Back when I was on the board, I'll just speak from experience, because I am not privy to current information, but we had attorney Dave Meyer, and he did excellent guidance on what we were allowed to do and what we were not allowed to do. Now, from my understanding, under the guide of our legal counsel, there is a process that a person has to go through to be privy to certain parts of the meetings that we have at GMH. There is an open session, all are welcome during that session, and then the executive session, of course, is a closed table of the Board of Trustees and the voting process. Now, if someone were to insist on coming into a closed Now, if someone were to insist on coming into a closed portion of the meeting, again, I would seek legal counsel because I believe they are not allowed to come in only because we discuss patients, cases, legal cases, how we intend to address our, we have a matrix that we go through with patient information and a lot of HIPAA-protected items. So that is not open for the public at that time. So William, do you have anything else to add to that?
Oh, I will ask Mr. Cando after this. Okay, so this was not an executive session and you're right. By law, there are exceptions to the open government law. When you go into executive session, and there are pretty much two reasons to go into executive session. One is personnel and one is lawsuits, right? And they're limited, you know, and those will be disclosed later as well. However, this was neither of those. It was not a trustee meeting, an executive session. It was a hospital meeting. And from what I gather, you know, they're talking about public financing. And that's what concerns me, you know? I wasn't there either, so I'm getting my facts from the newspaper. We'll hear from the hospital at our oversight. But just if, if it's one of those cases, I mean, this is the issue right now with the public and G M H, right? We want to know what is happening up there, you know? What are, what are the plans, especially if they involve financing? What are the impacts to patients? What are the delays in fixing the facilities, things like that? All right. Mr. Cando, can I just ask you, what is the status of the E H R system? So that does not become an issue here.
We are diligently working, training our staff, our end users on the use of the system so that we can, we're basically preparing for, to launch it on the 16th of October.
October 16th, thank you. All right. And then I know we're going to talk about this meeting and other things at the oversight hearing, so I don't need to put you on the spot for that right now unless you wanted to offer anything.
I'll reserve that for the oversight hearing.
Okay. And so I guess, Dr. Borja, yeah, so I would just impress, if I can, that transparency at the hospital, we have to trust the hospital, right? And we are all on board with the hospital. Every single member of our community wants to see the hospital succeed. And we want, everyone is working so very hard up there to feel supported, you know? But we're going to criticize the hospital when we run into things like that, where we have issues with hiring, transparency, or, you know, questionable things. And so the more that, you know, the trustees, I say, get control of that. You know what I mean? And be active and involved and make sure that you are the policy setters for the hospital and that those types of policies are clear. Recently, C M S visited the hospital and I was hoping to get a report from it. I know they haven't issued a final report, but I was hoping to hear what they were there for and what, you know, some of their preliminary findings. I haven't received that either. And I am hoping that you, as trustees, would discuss this and whatever is possible to disclose, that you will make it a board policy to disclose and that no runaround and why not? You know, I just think we're going to get better. We have gotten better because of C M S, because of them telling us you need to do better in these areas. And so I just say, bring us all along, right?
Yes.
Thank you. So now I'm going to open, oh, I'm sorry. I'd like to recognize the presence also of Senator Sabina Perez, the Vice Chair of the Committee on Health. Thank you, Senator. Open it now to Senator Duñez.
This is Madam Chair and Dr. Borja, thank you for accepting the governor's call to service and accepting this nomination. I want to take this time once again to recognize your family as well as, once again, reiterate, I think all of us concur on every day the work that folks are doing up at G M H and you see it firsthand as being a practicing physician treating patients there. I enjoyed your testimony. Our esteemed chair is very thorough and had some very detailed questions. So I just wanted to kind of, kind of focus in on reinforcement of what our speaker and our chairperson had mentioned. I think it's, I think you've seen, particularly in the last couple of years, we concur with a lot of the direction in terms of needing a new hospital and what has been recognized by the Army Corps. But we're very concerned that the current plant has to last and has to get through, you know, the bridge to that time when we can all be so very proud to have a new hospital and serving our people. So I guess I just have a two-part question. One is, you know, will you remain committed as a board member and the Board of Trustees to executing those mandates which come forward in terms of securing the current hospital going forward as we wait to construct a new hospital?
Thank you. Yes, I am also relying on my husband to take notes because I have not been writing, trying to focus on what Speaker Terlahi has requested. But yes, I do believe that getting back on the board, sometimes it's also nice to have a new perspective on the board, back on the board. But I would love to see some of those items come because I think the reality of it is that the new hospital won't be built, maybe not even in the five years. So it's interesting that this will also be along the amount of time that I will probably be working. But I think that getting an MRI is so important. We have to transport our patient to the doctor's clinic next door to get the MRIs. Part of the challenge with G M H is not only the funding to get an MRI unit, but also the space. When you put an MRI unit in the space, they have to secure the walls because the amount of radiation that can penetrate normal walls. So there's so much into getting an MRI. But I would, personally, as a foot surgeon, we get MRIs prior to surgeries so that we know where we're going in surgery. Not only that, the PET scan, we do currently send everyone to the Philippines and to the States. We have an enormous, enormously high incidence of cancer. Not just the cancers, but lupus, rheumatoid, a lot of these conditions that necessitate specifically cancer for a PET scan. I think it would do the people of Guam a great service to have that feature here because they're currently going through treatment and most of them would like to be here with family as they go through treatment. So I am hoping my husband has taken all those notes because those will be a priority for me. And I think working towards just maintaining our current structure and hopefully having the vision to go to a new structure will help motivate us to keep working on that.
Yeah, I'm very heartened by the fact that you have the experience. I mean, it just makes sense at this point to, you know, call you back to service, if you will. I just, I want to close with this because I know that, you know, there's a lot of push and pull and we all see it in our community. What I wanted to iterate to you, and I think my colleagues here, particularly on this panel, will say this, is that we don't view how we take the positions as adversarial. We're trying to help and that's why what we're looking for is we're just looking for that commitment and understanding that the mandates and what comes to us is filtered through us as policymakers to do our best to hand it off, you know, to the hospital, to the Board of Trustees and all the governance, as you mentioned in your testimony, being objective and dealing with the mandates. So that's, I just wanted to maybe close with your feelings on the fact that, you know, that we want to confirm you and we want to confirm you on the basis that it is our job to be the front line of getting all of these policy questions coming before us. But as we execute that mandate, we really just appreciate your attention to, as we go through and partner in the future together, if the people of Guam would have us, that we work together and those mandates are something that, you know, we want to ensure mandates of transparency, mandates of, we concur that electrical panel, all these key issues and Mr. Cando's need to execute those things is key. We just want to get a feel for the fact that you're committed to that process as well and understand that what we do here is basically try to get that, those mandates handed off so that those that are responsible to execute it are there and understand our role as well. So I just wanted to get your feelings on that.
I think, you know, although I was appointed by the governor, I do think that there is a benefit to being, not so much a liaison, but a liaison between the hospital and the governor and the legislature. I think I'm all for working and, yes, G M H has gotten a lot of criticism, but the task with G M H is to turn that image around and allow the community to understand that they are too responsible for the hospital. So some examples of that is, you know, not throwing your McDonald's bag in the hazardous waste, stuff like that. So the more that we communicate with the community and also work between the governor's office and the legislature and G M H, I think I am more than willing, with approval of everybody, to be in touch with Speaker's office on items that she might have questions on, but also just as a general way to have that open line of communication.
Dr. Borja, that's what I was looking for because there's no question about your acumen. You have the credentials, you have served well, you have served before. And, you know, for me to sit here and ask you questions about structure, things like that, I'm sure that would just be not a good use of our time. That's all I wanted to get from you. And I can tell you that you have proven to me today to be absolutely outstanding in that regard. And I look forward to voting in favor of your confirmation. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Duñez. Senator Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Certainly, good morning and thank you also very much for accepting the appointment to serve on the board. I'm sure having your previous experience, you're going to come with that. You know, it's difficult when I look at the hospital because everybody, you know, wants to see better and it's so politicized. You know, let's not kid ourselves. G M H is, you know, for people, when they, when they want to, you know, they come there because they're ill, maybe they're having a new baby and, you know, that's a wonderful thing. But most cases, you're coming there because you have an illness that needs to be addressed. And, you know, we want to have some confidence, I'm sure as you have relayed in our, in our community, that, you know, we're getting the best service possible. And it's unfortunate because we've not had that open dialogue and that what you would think would be the normal course of events because of the ultimate objective is to want to ensure that we have good quality healthcare to the best of our ability and also to the best ability of what this community can afford. You would think there'd be more dialogue, but there really isn't. I mean, this is the level of engagement for the most part and this is not the most productive. I mean, it serves a purpose for here, for your hearing. But in terms of moving towards the improvement, the internal politics at the hospital runs very deep. You know, you have accusations of physicians in some cases that, you know, are getting paid a certain salary that may or may not perform their work there or work to their best of the ability. Or those that are there, you know, it's just another day and we get through it versus, as you mentioned, what are we doing to improve things and, you know, move, move things further down the line to improve the ultimate outcome so that our community has some sense of confidence? Because we lose so much money that's not invested in our hospital because people think that they'll get better service elsewhere. And yet, as you mentioned, most people, of course, if they have an illness, especially something that can be treated here, would prefer because it's home and your family's here, your support system's here. And not everyone has the additional resources to go off-island and be in a strange place at a time when you need, you need to heal. So I'm hopeful that you will look at that because the trend is not always that way. You know, as the speaker mentioned, and now, you know, we'll look at that at the oversight hearing and ask those other tough questions. But when you see that abuse, when we see above-step recruitment for things that we don't look at as critical and then other critical things are not addressed or they're left behind, you wonder why? Why is that like that? And then it, you know, that erosion of confidence continues. And there's a lot of good people working hard every day that keep that place together. But when these things, other things happen that are distracting, then you really wonder what's the priority? And there's a tendency with healthcare and the hospital at G M H, very similar to education, we have these umbrellas. And we go, well, if you don't support us, then you don't support healthcare for our people. Or you don't support education because you're questioning or asking things. And I think sometimes we hide under that umbrella. And if you ask questions or raise those concerns, you know, if you're not playing ball, so to speak, you kind of get, you're not part of the team. And when you're not part of the team, then you get outcast, right? I think we all know that feeling. And I don't mind being part of the team as the team is doing a good job and going the right way. If they're going the wrong way, then, you know, that's not the direction I would like to be in. What do you see now coming back after, you know, with your professional? Because certainly your credentials are very impressive. You've served on the board before and you're coming back. What do you see as your main priority that you want to invest in this time around?
May I address the beginning of your talk? Okay. So what our boss does now, when we get our contracts renewed, the contracts have been a lot harder now. I mean, okay, I've been working there eight years under this current contract. And, you know, we definitely can't, you know, ask for a raise or, you know, because they really scrutinize us now. In addition to that, they require us to participate in some form of committee. And although, you know, I said, oh, you know, I'm available to be on a committee, because of the people that are there, you know, they've already chosen who are going to be on the committee. So it was this, this nomination to the board. And I said, okay, well, they're tapping me for this. So this is my give back, so to speak. So they are requiring even the physicians to participate in extra activities in the hospital. So that's why, partly why I'm back. Now, going forward, I think the priority for the hospital right now, I think the Medicare onsite inspections are very important because that's when you see everything is spanking clean. The cabinets are closed, the doors are closed, everything is appropriate. And, you know, you just see that hospital shining. And I think that's very important that we do have those inspections. So achieving this accreditation will help us, again, try to police ourselves and to have middle staff also be able to lead their departments and police themselves as well. So it provides that vehicle. The second thing, I think, after accreditation, like you said, whoever is the power at B, that's who, you know, their chosen people are the in-crowd, right? But that's the problem with the hospital is that if you go back years and years and years, it's, nothing's changed. When we were appointed, we did four years, five years of work and then a new governor comes in and we're gone. Because, you know, we resign or they wipe us out. So when we were out in 2011, I just felt like, wow, they're going to tear what we did piece by piece. So that problem we can't control. But I think that when we build the hospital, I mean, build the team currently or they are currently working on it, I think putting that in place and hoping that is maintained beyond us is, you know, always our goal. But unfortunately, we have to go with, you know, who the new governor would be next. And hopefully, they won't allow the work to be broken down.
Well, that's the hope, but I mean, it's wanting to get things in the foundation built up that it, there should be a continuity, irrelevant of who the governor is. I think we invest too much in that. I mean, we're like going back to the old colonial days where, you know, the governor's God here and we're at their mercy. And I think that, you know, the professional work, especially at your level and other professionals that work at the hospital, just, there should be some continuity. Everyone has their area to work on and improve upon and that they're investing in. And that should be there irregardless of who, there shouldn't be that big shift, actually, when you think of it. And you want to build and strengthen. So that's not the, you know, that what we've seen in the past is not the case. Because ultimately, you know, we want to make sure that when we go to the hospital, we're getting the best care and, like I said, the best care that our people can afford. I also just want to add on, and again, we'll leave the other stuff for the oversight, but as the speaker had mentioned, we definitely want to see the board members But as the Speaker had mentioned, we definitely want to see the board members, you know, have a broad perspective of all the issues because we've had other board nominees that have served on the board and are on the board coming before us for reconfirmation. And we're hearing decisions publicly that have been pronounced by the front office. And yet, they're not involved in those decisions. Even the decision of, oh, we're going to have a new hospital where it's going to be located. Oh, I don't know about that. Well, you sit on the GMH board, you are the policymaking board for the hospital, not the governor. And when we see and hear that, you know, you raise your eyebrow and you're, what the heck is going on here? And who's really running the ship? And so I hope that, at least from your comments, you've relayed what you want to do, which I appreciate, and I'm sure you'll be attentive. And the experience you bring to the table from your past service, I think, is all tremendous plus. And I appreciate your presentation far more than some of the others simply because they were not, we'd ask them key questions, oh, you're not aware that these positions were hard? No, we're not aware they were hard above step. And these were very, you know, very well noted in the media and in the news. But when you have a policymaking board member that's been serving, sitting there and they're, they can't answer those questions, you're like, what, you know? It just, it just really makes you wonder what's going on. And so as we move forward and, you know, I hopeful, I hope we have a nice new hospital. But I, again, I always look at it, can we afford it? Can the people of Guam afford it? Because I like a new hospital, but if I don't have the specialists or the physicians that I need, if we don't have the medication, if we don't, as Mr. Cando knows, looking at the old equipment list, you know, you have things running way beyond their lifespan. But, you know, they're keeping it going as long as they can because they're not being funded to put the updated equipment that you need in it. So, you know, it's nice to have the new building and the window dressing. But if the real part of, you know, actually providing the servicing care is not there, then who cares? Right? And I have to tell you, I appreciate the work you do because, you know, now that I watched that program on TV, I didn't realize all the dynamics of what foot doctors do. You know, you watch, you go, wow. So my hat's off to you. I look forward to exciting things with your return and your service back to the board. Thank you so much and thank you to your family. I think the fact that all your family members are here to support you really, really says a lot about their support of you as well. So thank you. Thank you, Dr. Borja.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
It's Senatorita in the house, right? All right, Senator Perez, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Dr. Borja, for stepping up to the plate. And I'm really glad to hear all your, I guess, your priorities as a board member. Being a former medical technologist myself, I'm really glad to see that you have an eye on quality assurance, performance improvement. And so, yeah, I think a lot of the questions were asked. But perhaps if you can talk about, I really like the idea that you're concerned about how we're spending a lot of money on traveling nurses. And I guess what, how do you plan to address, I guess, the hiring within GMH to better maximize the use of limited funding?
Well, I think as the pandemic is, I wouldn't say it's gone. But as it simmers down, the focus now is taking our current nursing students. They are currently rotating through GMH. There's also an additional program that the hospital is working on. Again, I know this only because of the paper, William, is ICU Critical Care Nursing Residency. And I think a lot of these students are excited. We already have some interested in GMH just from speaking with them. They come into the rooms with us when I do, you know, dressing changes. And they're very excited. Some are deciding to work at GMH. And I think you will see the travel nursing hire go down in the next few months just because, you know, people are not getting as sick anymore, our nursing staff, our hospital staff. The number of sick leave, you don't see that as much anymore, especially in the paper or even in our newsletter. And along those lines, I think that GMH has done a great job of trying to motivate the employees. We have an internal newsletter. But I think, although that is wonderful, I think we should have that information. Also have someone specialized to give information out to the public. So we're doing a lot internally. And as you said, you're not as much privy to the information as community members. So I think that's another project I would like to do is, we did that before with our PR person and is just getting out to the community, not just motivating ourselves or giving information within our organization. I think our next step would be more information out to the community.
Okay, thank you. And I know during the pandemic, there was, you know, a shortage of nursing, obviously. There was one model that was promoted or actually recommended that in order to cover the shortfall, that to allow for not nurses, but I think it was support, and then they would be then supervised by nurses. Do you still see that as a necessity or recommendation?
I believe some of those were medical assistants working under the guidance of a nurse. And I think they are utilizing some technicians in some departments. But as far as the floors, I don't think they're using them as much anymore. We do have volunteers, we also have nurse aides. They're very skilled. I've had the opportunity to work with a lot of them, one part times at my clinic. And so the breadth of her skills, it's quite impressive. So I think going forward, we will still retain the nurse assistants, nurse aides to the nurses. So as you see more nurses coming on the floors, I think that ratio to the nurse aide will still remain. I'm not sure we'll see the MAs as much on the floors or the technicians. But we do utilize them in other departments such as radiology.
Well, great. Well, thank you for the responses. And I think a lot of the questions were asked. And I do, you know, appreciate you stepping up and providing service to our community. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Borja. Yes, so we did, in our last budget cycle, tried to tweak that our appropriations to UOG for scholarships for nursing and make sure that those were dedicated and not used anywhere else because of the continued nursing shortfall. And so they have made some changes. Hopefully, we're going to be seeing additional graduates. And they've been doing excellent, steady stream, but we're hoping to make it bigger, right? Both GCC LPNs and UOG, the RNs. And the, and again, the RN passage rate at UOG is fantastic. So I want to just give them a shout out here. And they've, you know, very much through grants, a little bit through local, but mostly grants, done this CNA program during the pandemic, trying to shift workers who were unemployed into CNA Certified Nurse Assistant work. And they've had great success. Their programs are always full. And so, and I've seen it myself at the hospital, witnessing patients that, yeah, there are. And I always ask the nurse assistants that come into the room, did you go to UOG? Were you certified or not? And always, anyways, I'm very interested in that. And thank you for pointing out the internship for the ICU nurses. I think that's excellent. I thought I read in the paper that it was like they have to pay for that, though. And I was going to follow up the hospital.
Yes, I think it's $345.
Yeah, so they're, these nurses are paying to go through this internship.
It's, yeah, it's a residency.
A residency, okay. And I wanted to point out, so when we were talking about specialists, yeah, I looked it up. And so we did, in our 2023 budget, also add $5 million from the audited FY22 excess funds. So that won't be until after the audit, which will be next year after March, April. If there's $5 million left over after that audit, that excess $5 million will go for specialists, in particular, a GMH. Just trying to push that a little bit more. That was an amendment added by Senator Nelson and supported, I think, by all of my colleagues. And the and I wanted to put one more shout out where we're here. Well, you mentioned the ICU that the GMH volunteers are selling tickets for their raffle because they are very intent on bringing those machines into, I think, the ICU. Isn't that right? That's where they're going to go. I think they're respirators that they're trying to raise this money for. So I just wanted to my colleagues say they got their tickets. But I just wanted to put a shout out to them for continuing to help GMH in very specified supplies. And my understanding is that they get what you need or, you know, they're told what you need and that's what their goals are. And so I want to thank them for that, for continuing to help our community. All right, Dr. Borja, thank you again for accepting this appointment. Thank you very much for being willing to work and for your responses today. And for, I agree, bringing a new set of eyes to things that are going on and just hoping to liaison with our community and with the legislature. I appreciate that very, very much. GMH has with its facilities, staffing, and, you know, of course, throughout COVID, but always, you know, really been there for us, every single one of us and our families. And, you know, we want to be there and to support GMH. So we're hoping to work together with you in this regard. There being no individuals to present further testimony, the committee will consider the appointment of Dr. Teresa Demian Borja to the GMHA Board of Trustees duly heard. The public hearing is now adjourned and the time is, it looks like 9:40? 9:40 AM. This is Massey.